Good morning. I'll call the planning and zoning meeting of June 15th to order. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jim Harris, Lucas Steele,
Here.
Michael Gordon,
Here.
Doug Hardy, Donald Bergen, Dan McGowan, Chad Nelson, Susanna Ballard, Matthew Mitchell, Sam Levin. That's it.
Thank you. Susanna, we have a vacancy. Would you join us this morning? Please. Alright, the first item this morning is minutes from the previous meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections from minutes, or do I hear a motion? I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting. I have a motion in a second. We'll go ahead and vote. Need some help with Susanna's login.
Susanna Ballard. Thank you. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Correspondence and announcements?
Mr. Vice Chair, we have none. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, this is, now we'll start the public hearing portion of the meeting. Our first item today is ID 21-2840, a request for a zone change for 2455, 2457, and 2459 Anita Avenue, tract 2242, block 1, lots 13, 14, and 15, from limited commercial district C1 to single-family residential district R1. And I believe Mr. Nelson needs to step down for this item. Thank you. Mr. Morris?
Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners, thank you. The subject property is, the subject properties are located on Anita Avenue, at the northwest corner of Anita Avenue and an alley just west of 2461 Anita Avenue. There are these three lots here. The lots together are about 200 feet by about 150 feet. The lot is currently vacant and undeveloped. It's in the northwestern portion of town. Here's the current zoning of the property. It's certainly currently zoned C1. C1, limited commercial. You see the surrounding zoning is to the east and south, there's zone C2. I mean, excuse me, R2, multifamily residential R2. The property is the north, is zone R1, and then the properties to the west are zone C1. There's one developed property that's developed as a commercial use on one of those C1 properties. This is one of the areas in town that are zoned C1, and they're surrounded by either multifamily like R2 or R1 zoning. There's a similar node on North Palo Verde Boulevard near Bentley. There was one that's on Kiowa Boulevard near Bison Boulevard that's been, these areas have slowly been transitioning over to residential uses. The one on Bison and Kiowa has totally transitioned over. The one on North Kiowa, excuse me, North Palo Verde is partially transferred over to residential. And this is another one that's in the process apparently of transferring over to residential. The general plan calls out this area as low-density residential. So, the general plan does not support rezonance area to commercial. So it does support, though, a rezonance to residential use like C1 or C2, that sort of use. It is part of a parking and common area. Here's the track map. The rezonance will effectively eliminate that parking and common. Obviously, it's no longer a commercial use for the property, so it would be residential. The applicant has expressed a desire to split this into a couple pieces, to two lots. They will have to do either a lot combined or a lot reconfiguration because the current lots don't all meet the minimum standards for the zoning. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions to council or the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. First of all, I'm gonna step back. I forgot to read the proceedings or the order today. This is a public hearing. The structure of the meeting will allow the staff to present the item. The commission may ask questions, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to present. Commissioners may have questions for the applicant, and then I will open up the discussion to the audience. We ask that if you would like to address the commission, please do so. But there is a limit of one trip to the podium per topic and three minutes to speak. I'll then close the discussion and bring the item back to staff and ask for their recommendation. The commission will then hear a motion, discuss, and make a recommendation to the city council for their final consideration. We heard the item from staff, so at this point, I'll bring it back to the commission for any questions. At this point, it is a public hearing. Is the applicant present? Would you like to address the commission?
I do have a plot planned here, if you would take a look at it, on how I plan to combine the lots and then split them and then do a lot line adjustment.
Okay. Do we have that?
We do not have that. Typically, that process would happen after the lots have been rezoned. We could certainly have some way we can see if we can, do you have example, you can sample for each, a copy for each of the commissioners? So we can distribute that and we'll put it to the record.
Okay. Can we seat Mr. Harris now? Mr. Harris, would you like to join us? Alright, we have our chairman here now, so I'm gonna pass the baton off and go back to my seat. One second.
Okay, let me first apologize for my tardiness. My alarm did not go off on my phone, so I apologize. I understand that we are at the applicant on this item, and we are complete with that, so how about if we open it up to the public? Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Richard Adams. And I own the business up there on Anita, 2451 Frontier Concrete. And I own the lot next door on the upper side. And I just don't think that it should be rezoned for residential. I think it should stay commercial. I think it would actually probably hurt my business and hurt the value of my property. So I'm against it.
Okay.
So I don't know what else I'm supposed to say.
Okay. Are there any questions of the speaker? Mr. Still?
I guess I'd ask why you think it's gonna hurt the value of your property.
Well, I have somebody that was already asking me about the lot above my building. And once they saw the rezonance, they have not made me an offer because they do not believe that commercial should be with residential like that in that area.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning, council. It's nice to be here again on the other side over here. As I've been looking at Lake Havasu City in the planning and zoning, and I'm looking at it from up here, and I'm understanding that we need workforce housing, and I understand that housing are in a big need in Lake Havasu. There is a lot of development going in to Havasu Heights. Planners are working on that for our workforce housing issues and lack thereof. Which means a Lake Havasu City commercial property will be in dire need of, we're gonna need doctors and grocery stores and everything within these communities. And I understand our original direction was, let's get housing, we need housing, but housing is very important to our industry, but so is commercial. Commercial is extremely important to the Lake Havasu City. And this particular plan has parking in common. All of that went into place. I see residential all around it. I see a benefit to have commercial in there, so that's what I'm here for.
Any questions of the speaker? Hearing none. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak? State your name for the record.
Chad Nelson. The only thing that I would like to add to that is that, you know, there are several of these commercial parcels all around town, so availability is there. And like, there's one up on Chamoevere, it's the same thing. There's one building there, everything else is vacant. So, there are these commercial parcels even downtown. Over there on Querion and Riviera and those areas. The street Riviera, not in the Riviera, but so I think there's plenty of these commercial parcels available. And as you can see, there's mostly residential around this area. Frontier Concrete's been there for a long time, and nothing else has been developed around it, so I think turning it into residential would be the best move.
Any questions of the speaker? Mr. Still?
Chad, just one quick question. Why R1 instead of R2? I noticed the front edge is 48 feet, which for an R1 lot, unless they let you have the front edge on the alley, it seems like you would need a variance for that anyway.
I'm not the applicant, and I actually, the applicant works for me, so I don't, that's why I'm recusing myself. But I'm not a part of how this is laid out, so you'd have to ask the applicant that.
Okay.
Any other questions of the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? And you would be the applicant. Please state your name for the record.
Lisa Pender, 1906 Montana Vista. So what we got proposed for the lots is, yeah, the front edge on it is kind of narrow, but on the left-hand side, the lot would be pushed back, the proposed building envelope would be pushed back about 50 feet.
Kind of part of the point of the question is, is everything else around it is R2, you're asking for a less intense zoning than R2. It seems like it would have been a reasonable request to me if you were going for some type of residential application, but if you don't need it, because you don't need that density, that's kind of what I was wondering.
Yeah. I don't need that density.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting, bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends to commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for a zone change for 2455, 2457, and 2459 Anita Avenue, tract 2242, block 1, lots 13, 14, and 15, from limited commercial district C1 to single-family residential R1 with the following conditions. The lot shall be combined or reconfigured to meet the R1 standards prior to application for a building permit. And as a reminder, this item will still go onto the city council on July 27th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morris. We are at the table for staff's discussion and/or a motion. And I'm gonna start with the discussion. I would kind of have to take the side of Ms. Campbell's and Mr. Adams. These little nodes of commercial properties were designed to be like convenience stores, gas stations, dental office, something like that, distributed throughout the community. And I'm seeing personally several of these being gobbled up in residential. And once they're gone, they're gone. This one is kind of remote, it's way out there on Anita Avenue. However, it does have a purpose and I would, usually I'm forced, you know, a reduction in zoning like this, but this one, I'm not sure that we're doing the right thing. That's my opinion. Anybody else? Mr. Still?
I welcome the debate on that. I think we'd say no to this. It's going to be a first time that we've said no to a nodal area that was kind of a guess when we originally did our land plans on where exactly we would have build out around them and how much commercial we would need. And I think the market has dictated that we don't need the commercial right there, evidenced by the lack of development. And you see that up on Chamoevere, as Mr. Nelson pointed out. Some of those maybe when our city gets to full buildout, but right now around those areas, we are very close to full buildout, and yet we don't have commercial development happening on them. So I understand your point, I understand Ms. Campbell's point. I think it might be unfair, though, at this juncture to look at this particular small zoning and make an example of it for the first time. I don't think we've turned one of these down yet.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Morris has a comment.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. As I explained in the staff report, and I'll reiterate, the general plan for Lake Havasu City calls out this area as low-density residential. So when the general plan gets updated throughout the years, the most recent update, it's been deemed that this area, like similar areas around town, that have this nodal of C1 zoning, the general plan has been revised to eliminate that commercial use in those areas and absorb it into the adjacent low-density residential land use category in the general plan land use map. So this rezonance is in keeping with the intent of the general plan land use map for residential in this area. It's one of those areas, again, those commercial nodes scattered around town, that were, per the general plan, to be absorbed into the underlying residential zonings, if you will. So the general plan does support this, just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Anybody else? Any other commissioners? Mr. Gordon?
I'll just chime in. I mean, I kind of feel the same way as Mr. Still, and I appreciate that clarification, Luke. I think there certainly are a lot more commercial nodes in higher-traffic areas and areas that, you know, I think it is important that we preserve and make sure that we have options in the future to grow commercially, don't get me wrong. And I think we need to focus on that, and we're gonna need some direction probably from council to do that, but you know, as recent as the last couple of years, we've seen some actually very high-profile, high-traffic commercial areas be rezoned to residential, so I agree in this case, in this particular location, the likelihood of commercial development here is very, very low. If it happens, it would want to happen on the corner, not in the back anyway, so you know, I agree with that direction for the future and making sure we do protect some of this stuff, but in this particular case, I think it's an adequate request, and it appears to meet the direction that was approved for the general plan, so just my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Anybody else? Ms. Ballard?
As far as the comments are concerned, it seems to me that the surrounding areas are R2. I don't have a problem with converting this commercial to residential use, however, I think the correct zoning should be R2 instead of R1.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, we are at the table for discussion and/or emotion. Mr. Still?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend that the city council approve Land Use Action Number 21-2840 for a zone change from 2455, 2457, and 2459 Anita Avenue, tract 2242, block 1, lots 13, 14, and 15, from limited commercial district C1 to single-family residential R1 with the following condition. The lots shall be combined or reconfigured to meet the R1 standards prior to the application for a building permit.
Second emotion. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Still and a second by Mr. Bergen to approve item number, now let me look at it here, item number ID 21-2840 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the issue? Alright, let's call for the question. Technical question, Maria. Mine says this member is marked as absent.
I just changed it.
Okay. But I can't do anything yet.
Can you do it now?
No. Let me get out of it and come back in.
I'll take your voice vote.
I'm gonna say nay.
I apologize, I'm having a technical issue.
It's not even letting me sign back in. I closed out and tried to come back in, and it's not letting me sign back in.
Okay, I'm surprised I need to do a verbal photo on everybody right now, so, Mr. Harris?
Nay.
Mr. Steele?
Yeah.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Bergen? And Mrs. Ballard? Motion passes three to two.
Congratulations. Okay, the next item on today's agenda is ID 21-2841. This is a request for a zone change for 2571 Villa Palma, tract 2271, block 1, lot 7. A portion of golf course parcel 1-D, assessor's parcel number 105-14-036, from limited multifamily district R3 and golf course district GC to residential estate district RE. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. The subject property is on north side of Villa Palama, excuse me, Palama, Palma, excuse me, Villa Palma, just east of Akoma Boulevard, south. The applicant's own this lot number 7, and they're in the process of purchasing a portion of the golf course property to combine with that existing lot. Together, the combined lots is about two-thirds of an acre. As far as the current zoning, the property's currently is two zonings. The golf course portion, of course, is going zone golf course, and then the 2571 is zoned R, excuse me, R3. The nearby properties to the east are zoned RE. And then the golf course zoning, of course, is the green zoning around the property. Generally, around the golf course, the lots are zoned RE. In this area, there are some R3 zoning, but the vast majority of the zoning around the golf course is zoned RE. The applicants, again, are in the process of purchasing a portion of the golf course property, and then they plan to add it to their lot. They plan to build a single-family home on the property. Since they don't intend to develop the site as multifamily, they're requesting to rezonate to RE along with the golf course portion to RE for a single-family residential development. The current golf course parcel does not meet the minimum standards for RE, so they would have to combine the lots to, before they submit any building permit applications if this request is approved. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions of staff by commissioners? Anybody at all?
I have one, or a request, I guess.
Mr. Still?
There's been a couple of these that have come up now, so could you give us a really quick overview of the history of the rezonance of the golf course back in 2016 or lack thereof, and what's happened since?
Thank you, I appreciate that. Back when the code was revised in 2016, there was not a golf course zoning. That was a new zoning that came into play in that zoning code update. And the golf course was, existing golf course was then rezoned golf course. The idea there, there was some pushback from the neighborhoods, I believe, at the time that the golf course, if the golf course portion was zoned RE, like it was maybe originally gonna be done with that update, that then the golf course could sell off individual lots and basically do away with the golf course because the zoning would be in place to do individual lots on the golf course. The golf course, the new owners were fully in support of the golf course zonings for those, is my understanding, of the golf course properties. And subsequent to that development code update with the golf course zoning being established, they have sold off or offered for sale portions of the budding, of the golf course property that is abutting some residential properties. Some of those residential property owners have purchased portions of the golf course, and then that can combine them with their property. Now, that is still one property, but then it has two separate zonings. The zoning of the original property, which in most cases is RE, and then the golf course portion that they purchased would still remain RE, I mean, golf course zoning would still remain GC. Some of those property owners have taken the next step and combined, after combining the two lots into pieces into one parcel, they would rezonate the golf course portion to the RE zoning, which is their residential, single-family residential. They would do that because then the property could be treated as one piece of property with RE zoning, and then the building setbacks would be based on that, the new boundary of the RE zoned property, the entire lot. If they didn't combine those, if they didn't If they didn't combine those, excuse me, if they didn't rezone the golf course portion to RE, then they would be limited, they would have a 50-foot setback for any structures on that. So it would basically make the new portion that they purchased from the golf course unbuildable. They could do accessory uses like swimming pools, retaining walls, fence walls, landscaping, that sort of thing on that golf course zone portion. So that's kind of a brief synopsis. There have been maybe a ten to a dozen of these properties that, property owners who have purchased portions of the golf course property and then rezoned that golf course to their residential property zoning. So I hope that explains it. Thank you.
It does, I thank you.
I have a question. Have these properties already been combined through the city in the process?
No, they have not. My understanding is that they're not totally under one ownership at this point, but the applicant is here, I'm sure they can answer that to more detail than I can.
It's, it's not necessary, it's just my own edification. But back to your explanation, when they are combined, they'll have two different zoning districts and they need to be created or changed to a single zoning district is what you said.
Yes, that would be much cleaner in the land use category. I mean, they could keep them separately, separately zoned, but it would limit what could be done on the golf course zoning portion.
I just wanted to get that clarification in there. Okay, is the applicant present? Would you like to make a presentation?
I don't think we need to.
Okay. Would there be any, I'll just skip that portion then. Are there any questions of the applicant by staff or the commission? Hearing none? We'll take us straight to the public hearing portion. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all, please come forward, state your name for the record.
Lenny Metzendorf. I'm representing my dad, which owns the house at 2591 Via Palma, which is right next to the fairway there, the tee box. Also representing the property owner at 2601 Via Palma. The owner is here at the home, I have his house currently listed and in escrow currently. My dad would have liked to have been here, but he has a disability, so it would have been difficult for him to come here. Basically, all around, I don't feel right about any of this being sold off, even staying golf course for the owner or changing from R3 to R4. R3 to R4, or RE, I'm sorry, not R4. RE is 30-foot height limitations, R3 is, I believe, 15-foot height limitations. There's a few reasons why I don't agree with that. One is the applicant owned the house up until November last year, just to the west, sold that property, that's an R3 zoning, 15-foot height limitation. The property, they owned the lot, vacant lot next door, which has, is an R3. When they bought that property, they knew it was an R3 zoning. My dad's house at 2591 Via Palma, he purchased that lot 34 years ago, my mother and my dad bought that. And they were very happy, had a 270-degree view. My dad is one of the first pioneers here in Lake Havasu and believed in what McCullough did. And when McCullough did something, he stuck with it. And it was a master plan community. So when my dad and my mom bought that lot, they knew they had a 270-degree view, golf course and a buffer over the R3 area. Behind my dad's lot, there's about 145 feet to the applicant's lot as a buffer. I have given everybody a letter here, I think everybody has it, also photos. And in the photos, I showed what, how the view would be blocked. I went ahead, I outlined the applicant's current existing lot, that if he was to build R3, I drew a box as far as what it would ruin the view. It doesn't change anything whatsoever. I went ahead and also showed if it becomes R4, RE, I'm sorry, and they purchase the golf course property and they can go ahead and build within their setback, it would block the entire view, most of the view. I did talk to the applicant, the applicant said that they are not losing their view toward the lake to the northwest, and that is true. But as you can see, there's still a 270-degree view around there and that's what they purchased. They purchased on golf course zoning at the time and they also knew the lot across the fairway or the tee box was R3. The property that I represent, 2601 Via Palma, for the owner here, that could be a diminishing value and I had to state it in the MLS that we are currently going to planning and zoning and that would be a huge factor for the buyer. Same with my dad's house. I, I feel like I'm up here to do a $100,000 speech. If this thing passes, there's $100,000 lost in value and perceived. I don't feel this is for the betterment, except for one person, which already owns a .35 acre lot, which is a pretty large lot, and for the fact that now he's going to purchase a golf course area and which make a .67 acres. The average lot on Via Palma is less than a quarter acre. Many of those lots are .19, .20 acres. Under a quarter acre, but the applicant feels a need to go ahead and have .67 acres right there, taking away the 18th tee box, which has been there for approximately 50 years, I believe, when McCullough put the golf course in. The next thing, I feel like this is setting our precedent. I understand when Luke Morris mentioned that 2016, when they did the new zoning codes, it sounds like by labeling it GC, that they will be able to go ahead and start selling off her lots. You know, in the past, there was excess land for the golf course and I respect what the owners of the golf course has been doing because golf courses can be a failing business. So they went ahead and figured they could sell off the excess land to help offset the cost. When they first purchased the golf course, if you look to the south of the tee box, 18th tee box, they had plans to do, I'm not exactly sure, but I believe it was at least two lots on the 17th fairway, so they're going to remove the 17th fairway, do another lot. And the neighborhood going up Via Palma, this is a golf course area, no homes and so on. Now they're going to close all that off and start selling off this land, which is not excess land. Very creative, but it's not excess land.
That wraps it up. Do you have any questions on the photos or anything? Are there any questions of the speaker? Anybody? Mr. Nelson?
I have one question. Said the property is currently under contract, is there any reputation, representation from the buyer here?
I don't believe so. He's out of town.
Okay.
Any other questions of the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Metzendorf.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? If you'd like to come forward, state your name for the record and we'll...
Theron Tilger, the applicant. I did have a really pleasant talk with him a month or so ago, very nice. He, I understood his point, his father's. We know his father a little bit, he's eight years old, I think. He barely gets out of the house, he walks in a walker, he goes to mailbox and back. I know he doesn't go to the second level, that's beside the point. And I certainly wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want to do anything to offend any of our neighbors. We've been a property owner to the one that, I think it's the west there that most people know for 12 years. We've been excellent neighbors. You know, we're, we're going to be an excellent neighbor if we can, welcome to be, come back. Welcome to come back. Something that may be in a diagram that you might have that isn't shown on the map is that I believe it's 50 feet that we're being set back from his father's property. There's a water main that goes through there, so we have to be set back at least 10 feet from that water main. So the picture he is proposing is that we're going to be blocking a large amount of the view. We're really not, and if you look at it specifically, we really aren't. The, the view that he's really losing is a small portion of Cupcake Mountain. Not anything to do with the lake and the, and the big value there. The point he made about the tee box and that we're going to be taking away the tee box, a technical point, I talked to the owners of the golf course and particularly the, not the groundskeeper, but the other guy that's in charge. According to USGA, that particular hole is a par five and it cannot be a par five regulated by USGA, it's a par four. So, technical point, they were planning on moving this hole up from 450-something yards to about 440 or 20 to make it a legitimate par four anyway. So they have the potential to have a vacant tee box that we're not really taking away from anybody. They were doing that to be regulated by USGA. And then on top of that, and somebody else here can help me, but I've understood that the golf course has the right at any point to do something on their own property. Not even necessarily going through planning and zoning that I don't understand. But, but I've been told, for example, they could come in and they could put in that very exact same spot that I may build a custom home, which would increase the value of your home and anybody around. They could come in and build townhomes on that, in that area. That's what I've been told. So would my neighbors rather have somebody come in and put a townhome in there potentially in the future or have somebody who has a custom home with pretty upstanding neighbors and people that, you know, are friendly? We're both physicians in the community. God, if you need us, we're right across the fairway, we'll come over and help you. So I think that's my point. Do you have anything? So...
Any questions of the applicant? I do have a point of clarification. So are you saying, based on this diagram that's up on the screen there, that you have a 50-foot setback?
I don't know if the term is setback, but if you go from Lenny's father's wall to my property line, it's somewhere close to 50 feet.
Okay.
I think 55.
55 separation.
Or Mr. Johnson's here, yeah. And so there, part of that is because of some setback, but also because of the water main is there. So we have to stay to the west of the water main by, I think, 10 feet. So, you know, we're not even getting a full lot out of this.
So is there an easement to be created on
Yes.
the new parcel 10 feet in on that side lot?
Yes. I don't know exactly where, but the new golf cart path would go right through there where it currently goes between my two, my current lot and my proposed lot, it goes through there. So we would be paying to redirect that lot around.
Okay, and just for clarification, the rear setback would then be 25 feet, Mr. Morris, or 20?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. And if this is rezoned to RE, the rear setback for the main structure is 20 feet from this rear property line. The setback from the side property line is 10 feet in the RE district. Now, to elaborate more on the easements and whatnot, there is currently an application pending, pending this rezone to abandon an easement here on the golf course portion and then rededicate it over on the new portion of the, on the revised portion of the golf course, shown by this dotted line. So it'd be an ingress, egress, and utility easement that would be eliminated from this portion of the property and then rededicated over here. That's a separate action, it's not part of this rezone action, but that's something that's in the plans for this property.
Is that in process right now? The application has been submitted to the city?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Tilger. Appreciate it. All right, is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Kevin Phillips, and I am the current owner of 2601 Via Palma. I live next door to Lyle Metzendorf, who, as many of you know, have been in this community for several, several generations. With the development that they are proposing, it does take away a view he has had for several years. As for my own lot, it does take away certain views of the mountains, other areas that, as far as Cupcake, place I call the Sleeping Indian. And then there are some other issues with the changing of the easement. You now are creating a pathway directly behind houses. Those, that pathway, based on where we're at on the 18th tee, have in the past, even with the easement now, created much disturbance with intoxicated golfers, motorized carts, motorized skateboards going down. It's disruptive. It does cause the animals in the area to have some issues, as mine does. It also, there are several people, or at least Mr. Metzendorf, who tend to go bed way earlier than normal. And with the changing of the easement, it also brings in all that noise traffic to his lot. As far as the construction and everything else that's going on, that is also a concern I have, not only for my, hopefully, future tenant, our future buyer, but also Mr. Metzendorf. My future buyer is aware of the zoning. We, the feeling I have gotten that he is sort of holding, waiting, even though he is under contract, but his earnest may be not willing to give away versus if this goes through, what the value of the property may be changed and he may not even want the property. So that is a concern I have. I do have a question regarding the golf course portion. And I apologize. Are you in, have you purchased that portion yet in the process, in the process also? Okay.
So for the, for the record, the speaker asked the applicant if he had purchased the property yet and it's in the process?
It's in the process. Okay, that is all I have to say. It is a community he, that has been established when we bought the property. It was established that golf course was going to be there, we would not have any problems with views. That's one of the reasons we bought it. It's also one of the reasons that we advertised and selling it as well as the views. So, thank you.
I have a question for you. Clarification, which property is yours?
2601.
Okay, I thought that was Mr. Mastorff.
No, his is on the corner.
I see.
And it has been there. The prior owners to me have been, were the Romaros, Romero's.
Terry Romero.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any questions of the speaker? Okay, is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Pro or con, anybody at all? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting and bring it back to staff for their recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends the commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for 2571 Via Palma, tract 2271, block 1, lot 7, and a portion of golf course parcel 1D, APN 105-14-036, from limited multifamily residential R3 and golf course district GC to residential estates district RE with the following conditions: The lot shall be combined prior to application for a building permit. This will go on to the city council with your recommendation on the July 27th meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we are at the table for discussion and/or emotion. Commissioners, discussion?
I have a few questions.
Mr. Nelson?
For Mr. Morris. Mr. Morris, the applicant mentioned that the golf course owner could build townhomes currently where those tee boxes are, is that true?
Well, thank you for the question, Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioner. The golf course zoning does not allow any residential uses. It could be accessory use, it could be things like a bed and breakfast, excuse me, a hotel motel or conference facility. As shown here, it could be as an accessory use to the golf course. A resort could be an accessory use to the golf course. To further, what's further limiting that particular stretch there is there's a setback for the golf course of 50 feet from the property line to any buildings. So if, if this strip is, let's say the strip is 100 feet wide and they're trying to rezone half of it to golf course, I mean, from golf course to residential, that they won't have enough setback property there to meet the setback. So I think it would be, I don't see how it would be mathematically possible to have enough room to build something in that specific area. If the, if it's about 120 feet wide, that would only leave a 20-foot wide strip after you subtract the 50-foot setbacks on either side and the front. So it doesn't appear mathematically like it'd be a very viable solution for...
My second question is... My second question is, if they built, you know, if it's zoned R3, what is the rear setback?
The R3 has a rear setback of 20 feet.
20 feet, okay. And it's 15 feet high?
15 feet in height, yes. The RE, of course, is a multiple-family zoning district, so it would allow, of course, a single family, it would allow a two-family, it would allow multiple-family, tiny homes, whatever, there's different multiple-family products that could go in a RE property.
That was my question.
Mr. Still, did you have a question?
I was just going to ask what the difference was between R3 and RE, and you explained it, it sounds like height really is the only one.
The RE is a single-family residential zoning district, it allows up to 30 feet in height. The R3 is a multiple-family, allows 15 feet maximum.
Density, obviously, you could do a higher density if you kept the R3, but with the RE, you're going to be limited to one.
Yes, in the RE, you're going to be one residential unit, and the R3, you can do multiple units depending upon the design.
Any other commissioner questions? Discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Bergen?
Again, for Mr. Morris. This golf course area to, to, to the side there, would they still be using this for getting from the north to the south with the golf course? Would they still be accessing through there? Or are you saying that it's not big enough for them to do that?
Well, maybe I need to restate that. If they're, if the question was whether they could build a residence or a home or a structure here on the, this golf course portion of the property here, they would be very limited, because they would have a 50-foot setback from the property line to the north and south and from the street property line. They'd have 50-foot building setbacks, so they wouldn't be able to build anything that's of any size there.
They, meaning the golf course?
The golf course, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The golf course. Is your question about access for the golfers, is that...
Well, if, if the golf course only had that smaller area to get the golfers from the north to the south, it would have them crossing that road right at the curve, which is kind of dangerous.
Okay. That would be something that, I guess, if it was a concern, traffic issue, it would be reviewed by the Public Works Department. There's, obviously, this golf course has been operating for a number of years with people crossing over at that location. I would suspect the golf course would be aware of making sure that their golfers are crossing in a safe manner, so they would need to design this in such a way that it would meet all the traffic safety requirements. I don't really have an answer other than that.
Any other questions or discussion? We're at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Mr. Still?
I move to recommend that the City Council approve land use action 21-2779 for the zone change from 2571 Via Palma, tract 2271, block one, lot seven, and a portion of the golf course parcel 1D, APN number 105-14-036, from Limited Multi Family R3 and Golf Course GC to Residential Estates RE with the following conditions: The property shall be combined prior to application for a building permit.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Still, a second by Ms. Ballard, to approve ID 21-2841 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion? Anybody? All right, let's call for the question.
Motion passes 5 to 1.
All right, congratulations. All right, the next item on today's agenda is ID 21-2842. It's a request for a preliminary subdivision plat for the Havasu Life South, a subdivision of tract 2257, block 10, lots 18 through 21, creating 32 residential lots on a 2.41 acre parcel in the residential Southgate District, R-SGD. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have a couple commissioners that need to recuse themselves.
Okay. Mr. Gordon and Mr. Still, you're going to step down for this item? Seeing as we have no alternates here, so we'll just proceed with this quorum?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yeah.
How many members do you have left at the dais?
Four.
Four.
You have four? Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome, Kelly.
Hi, Kelly.
It's like this voice from above.
The subject property is four lots, they're at the southeast corner of Arapahoe and Kearsich Drive. They measure about two and a, just under two and a half acres. There's an alley that abuts the property in the south. The site generally slopes down about 15 feet from the east toward the west. There is currently a building permit for grading for the property, for rough grading for that project. Here's the current zoning, it's zoned residential Southgate District, which is a multiple-family zoning district. The properties to the west and in north and east are all zoned, that same residential Southgate District, and contain a mix of residential and then a church to the west there. The property to the south across the alley is zoned commercial Southgate District, and is vacant. Here's a portion of the parcel plat, preliminary plat. The owner's plan is to subdivide it into 32 residential lots with two drainage parcels and private street. The proposed lots range in size from 1,600 to 3,200 square feet. The building setbacks for the project would be measured from the subdivision's exterior property lines, with each lot having zero lot line, interior lot line setbacks, and that could allow for the possibility of some attached single-family dwellings. Since there would, there would be no public streets on the property, the development, a development agreement will be required with the final plat's middle outlining the developer's responsibilities for the city's water and sewer lines within the subdivision. The project will have a property owners association to manage and maintain the private streets and improvements. We received no objections from any of the reviewing parties. We did receive comments from planning and building, and they're attached and shall be addressed with the final plat. That concludes our staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions of staff by the commissioners? Anybody at all? Okay, is the applicant present? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Lee Johnson with APL Surveying. We reviewed all the conditions that staff had put on this, and we have no objections to any of those conditions. We've actually started on a few of them, as far as the, we've worked with Unisource already to get the utilities rerouted around the perimeter of this, where we can abandon the easement in the middle. So that's already underway, and then I'm just here to answer any technical questions that you guys might have.
All right, any questions of the applicant? Anybody? Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
All right, thanks, Commissioners.
Okay, I'll now open it up to the public. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all? Pro or con? This is a public hearing. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of a preliminary subdivision plat for the Havasu Life South, a subdivision of tract 2257, block 10, lots 18 through 21, creating 32 residential lots on a 2.41 acre parcel in the RSGD District. Be approved with the following conditions: One, add tract 2406 to the subdivision name; two, any required covered parking space should not be located in a utility or drainage easement; three, label the drainage parcels as parcel B and parcel C in the lots S1 through 32; provide a development agreement for review that includes the sewer, city's sewer and water services. A PUE abandonment will be required. Site retain walls cannot use LHC standard retain wall detail, they shall be engineered and by a separate permit. Revised keynotes on sheet C4 accordingly. Buildings cannot be placed closer than three feet to the top of a two-to-one slope per LHC amendments to IRC code section. Per proposed grades and sections, it appears the slope between buildings will be two-to-one. Revised grades and sections accordingly. Thank you.
Okay, any questions of staff?
I have one question.
Mr. Nelson?
Can we do a PD abandonment in, along with this application?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Commissioner. Yes, the, the preliminary plat is basically a general layout. It's pretty exact as far as the way that lots or the subdivision will be laid out. The final plat map will, will be able to take care of any abandonments and/or rededications of easements. So with the final plat map, that will change, they, that's a mechanism where that, that could be used to rededicate easements, relocate easements, or relocate or dedicate new easements. So that will happen with the final plat phase of the project.
Okay, because typically, when we go through the planning and zoning process at this point, we have to do an application to abandon the current PD and approve the new one.
Oh, there's not currently a PD. I misunderstood your question.
That's my question. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff by commissioners? Hearing none, we are at the table for further discussion and/or a motion. Anybody want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Nelson?
To approve land use action number 21-2840 with staff's recommendations.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Nelson, a second by Ms. Ballard, to approve ID 21-2842 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the item?
It says on here that the motion was made by Lucas Still.
I got Chad Nelson on mine.
Oh, really? On mine, it says mover Lucas Still. How did you push the button from there?
I think everything is still showing from the past motion, from the past item. Motion passes 4 to 0.
Okay, congratulations. The next item on the agenda is the call to the public. This is the portion where anybody in the public can speak to the commission about any item whatsoever. We may not respond, but you may approach and speak to us. Anybody at all? Call to the public. Hearing none, I'll close the call to the public. Future meetings, Mr. Morris?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. I also just want to say, appreciate everyone's patience here on the commission, in the audience and at home watching with the, we've had some technical issues that typically don't happen on these meetings, so we really appreciate your patience in that. As far as future meetings, the next regular scheduled meeting is, will be July 7. We do have a number, we have about nine items for that item, for that meeting, so will be a busy day. We'll also have the election of chairman and vice chair at that meeting, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we stand adjourned.